Please join me in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming to the 2019 Hudson School District Annual Meeting. I'm Jamie Johnson, President. Vice President is Bruce Hanson. Carrie Whitaker, Clerk, you can raise your hand, all right. And Heather Logland, Treasurer. We have members Rob Brown, Sue Kattas, and Bob Baumann. Our Superintendent Nick Olet will be taking over to elect the Chair of the Meeting here. And we also have at the head table here, I guess, front table, Tim Erickson, who's our Chief Financial and Operations Officer for the District. Superintendent Olet.
Oh, I couldn't pass up the opportunity to hit the gavel, but I'll move on now. So pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 120.08, the Hudson School District, like all common school districts in the state of Wisconsin, is required to hold an annual meeting.
Is this better? There we go. I'll start again. Pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 120.08, the Hudson School District, like all common school districts in the state of Wisconsin, is required to hold an annual meeting to allow the district's electors to take action regarding the special powers reserved to the electors by the Wisconsin statutes, including but not limited to in Wisconsin Statutes 120.10. Electors are those residents of the district who are 18 years of age or older. If there are concerns regarding the residence status of anyone who is seeking to vote as an elector, please let the Chair know once we elect a Chair, and we will address those concerns as they arise. Now it is time to elect a Chairperson for the annual meeting. Do we have any nominations?
I would like to nominate Jamie Johnson.
Any other nominations? And a third time, any other nominations? All right, hearing no more nominations, we have a one nomination, so we entertain a vote by the electorate to, I guess, appoint Jamie Johnson as the Chair of the annual meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Chairperson.
Thank you. Superintendent Olet, and I'll turn the microphone actually back to you if yours works. We had a little technical difficulties before the annual meeting tonight, but Superintendent Olet will give us some of the school district highlights.
All right. So it is my honor tonight to spend some time talking about the highlights of the district. If you were around for our new teacher luncheon and for our back-to-school staff meeting, you may find that some of the material is somewhat repetitive, but it's always great when we have the opportunity to celebrate some of the wonderful things that are going on in the district. The first couple of slides that we're going to touch on here in the background is the Raider Way. And again, these are just some overarching principles that we try to follow as we work our way through our work with kids, but we want to be a welcoming environment for all. We want to be respectful. We want a safe and supportive learning environment. We want to make sure that everybody feels like they are a contributor to the education of our kids. We want to make sure that we're a student-centered district, that students are our work, and that's the reason that we are all here. We want to make sure that we're constantly improving and constantly working to make sure that students have what they need to be ready for post-secondary success. And then lastly, the Raider Way talks about a culture of excellence, but really, it's really about making decisions based on what's best for our kids and keeping that on the forefront of what we're doing. What I'd like to do now is, now that we've highlighted a few of those points on the Raider Way, what I'd like to do is talk a little bit about the district's achievements and also a little bit about what's going on this past summer and this past year. The Hudson School District has over 830 full-time employees. We have another roughly 400 part-time employees. We are the largest employer in the St. Croix County. This year, we welcomed 42 new certified staff. Certified staff would be anyone from counselors, teachers, ed specialists, people that are required to have a certain certification to hold a position in the district. We also welcomed two administrative sta- new administrative staff members and 35 new support staff members, everything from administrative assistants to paraprofessionals to noon duty and other folks along those lines. So we did a lot of hiring over the summer, but it's pretty much in line with what we do on an annual basis. It's a little bit about what we did this summer when it relates to kids. So a lot of times, people think that when school's out for the summer, that there's no kids here, but it's contrary to that thinking. We have quite a few kids in our buildings all summer long. We had 1,175 K-8 students involved in our summer school program. It is an enrichment program the district puts on. Last year, we went to two sessions of summer school, June session and August session. It was very well received, and so we continued that this year as well, and it was very well received by our students in K-8. We also had over 350 high school students that earned high school credit in summer school programming, and this isn't necessarily just credit recovery or kids that needed additional credits that maybe failed classes. This would be kids wanting to go above and beyond what the expectation is in the regular school year. We had over 1,100 kids in our summer swim program. It's one of the largest summer swim programs in the area, which is great to see considering we are a river town, and it's important, obviously, to get our children safe around water. We had 390 high school and middle school students participating in our Raider Elite Program. That's our strength and conditioning program. This is the first year that we brought it back in-house. It was free for all students, so that was kind of nice for them, and it was a great program, and the coaches and sponsors did a great job with that. And then we had another 350-plus students in our school-age care program. That's where we are providing the primary childcare for these children, the all-day care. This year, it was at EP Rock Elementary, and we rotate that around the different buildings each summer. Achievement-wise, the Hudson High School was named Wisconsin Level One Pace Setter Schools as a result of the high number of students taking advanced placement courses. I think Sandy, in the previous meeting, talked about all of our AP Scholars and really highlighted that, and we saw the names of those folks. We had 197 AP Scholars with honors and distinction, along with an additional nine national AP Scholars, and those are students that passed eight or more AP courses, and that meaning that they scored at least a three or better on their ACT exam, which translates to college credit, and so it's savings for parents. We had two high school students that achieved a perfect ACT score this year. It's quite the feat, and as I remind the whole staff as we started off this year, kids don't just get to their junior year knowing how to do calculus. Somebody had to teach them two-digit multiplication first and all the other different components to build up to that. So a lot of these celebrations, although they're at the high school level, it's really a culmination of the great work that's happening pre-K-12 in our district. We had three National Merit Scholar finalists. You know, schools are lucky to have one every few years. We had three this year. Our high school PE teacher, Molly Dato, was the Midwest PE Teacher of the Year. In 2019, we were listed as a Best Community for Music Education again. Our middle school tech ed program, tech ed department, was named the Wisconsin Technology Program of the Year, so only one program in the entire state, and that was right here in Hudson. They do an outstanding job. At the high school level, we had 1,858 student athletes, with 240 of those participating in multiple sports. We had 14 athletic teams that advanced to state tournament levels, 11 Big River Conference team championships or champions. We had 23 athletes that will continue their sport at the collegiate level, and so that's always great to see how we can support kids in all of the different areas. We had three middle school students receiving Promising Young Rider Awards, and what's interesting about this award is there was only three in the entire state of Wisconsin, and they all are from the Hudson Middle School, so that was great. We also had the Hudson Middle School placed third at state in Future Problem-Solving Riders' Challenge, so we're very fortunate for that. Middle School Science Olympia had placed sixth at state, earning 26 medals. They came and spoke to the board, I think, earlier this year. If you remember, all the medals they had hanging around their neck, it was quite impressive. Great group of kids. We had three elementary schools that were received the Wisconsin Program of Promise Award, EP Rock, Hudson Prairie, and Willow River, and that had to do with the counseling programs and everything that they're doing there, and just outstanding schools and great programs. Willow River also earned the 2019 Title I School of Recognition for High Progress, and that really has to do with working with our kids that have some of the biggest challenges with reading and things like that, and showing the progress to getting those kids on track. And so we're very proud of what they're doing at Willow River. Some things to think about, I don't know if it's necessarily achievement, but it is definitely something to keep in mind. We had over 48,000 hours of activities take place in our buildings outside the normal school day. So there's always people in these buildings, and it's not just the high school, it's in all the buildings, and it's quite a feat. But I think the thing that is an accomplishment on a daily basis is that our maintenance department is responsible for cleaning over 1.1 million square feet of space every single day and having it ready for our kids, and so that's the absolute feat in and of itself. We serve over 1,000 elementary student meals every day, over 2,000 middle school and high school meals every day, and we transport almost 4,000 students every day. And so all of these things have to be working. They have to be working well in order for us to do what it is that we like to do and achieve with our kids. One of the things I wanted to touch on real quick here, and I know Jamie had talked about this with the back-to-school staff, is our areas of focus with the board. The board spent some time a little over a year ago really looking at what does a high-performing district in their mind look like, and they came up with five areas: strong academic achievement at all levels, preparing students for postgraduate success with life skills, a supportive and inclusive learning environment, recruiting, retaining, and supporting quality employees, and parents and communities, parents and community that are engaged and well-informed. And really, what we did is we spent quite a bit of time this year, over this past year, is now trying to look at how do we measure that and how do we see if we're actually hitting our marks on those things. And so the district has been working on, the leadership teams are working on a scorecard structure to be able to have real measurable outcomes as it relates to those five different focus areas, and also trying to tie back the board's work to those five different focus areas. One of the things you'll notice is it was a little bit different in this agenda than in previous agendas for the meeting that was just before this, is that we're starting to add, you know, with each of the agenda items, how do they tie to the focus areas? Or if they're not necessarily tied to a focus area, is it because they're a business-related item that has to happen or a statutorily required item that needs to happen? So we're very fortunate, like I said, a lot of wonderful things going on in the district. It'd be nice if we had a little bit larger audience here, but for those of you that are here, welcome, and I thank you for coming, and thank you for the opportunity to lead such a great district. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Olet. And next up, we have Board of Education Treasurer Heather Logland giving the district financial overview.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Heather Logland. I have had the honor for three years to serve on your local Hudson School Board, and this year I have the added bonus of serving as your board treasurer. So those of you who know me would say she is not a CPA, she is not even an accountant. The good news is that we have an incredible financial services team at this district. Our work as a board is to represent all of you, keep our eyes on the budget, keep our eyes on our focus, which is our students, and the investments that we make to make sure that those students get the best education possible. So we oversee the budget, and we do have taxing authority. So before I get into just a few points about our financial health, our budget, and our levy, there are 422 school districts in the state of Wisconsin, and I've learned a lot about school finance since starting my work on the board. One interesting thing that not everyone might know is that those school districts do not rely on their local jurisdictions, their local cities, townships, et cetera, to funnel taxpayer dollars to them to fund their schools. Instead, they have independent taxing authorities. So each year, we come to you as a school board, and we ask you to make a commitment to our schools by approving our budget and our levy, and so that's what we're going to do tonight. So school budgets in Wisconsin are funded primarily, like 98% primarily, with two sources: state dollars, which are your tax dollars at work, and then our local property taxes. And so we're going to talk a little bit about those, but I think that's important to understand. And those of you who maybe have moved here from another state, like Minnesota, know that Wisconsin relies more on property taxes than some other states do. And so that's when you, when you look at your taxes and how you are making an investment in this district, that's what you're seeing, both in your regular taxes and then in your property taxes. So a couple of things about our district's financial health. And those of you who are here have a copy of this beautiful blue book. Those of you who aren't here but are watching maybe at home on your television, I know this blue book either is or will be available on the district website, so I'm going to reference a couple of page numbers, and if you want to later take a look at that, it's all in this book, which will be on our website, HudsonRaiders.org. So on page 22, "One measure of a district's financial health is the district's total educational cost per student." And so you, as a taxpayer, might be looking and thinking, well, how is what we're spending? How does it compare to other districts? So as reported by the DPI, or Department of Public Instruction, for the state of Wisconsin, in 1718, 2017 to 2018, our investment per student was $12,907. So that's our investment per student. That's right near the state average of $12,833, and actually, a little bit below the average for schools in our region. So in Wisconsin, schools are clustered into CESA, C-E-S-A, CESA's, and the average for that cluster, our local cluster, is $13,144 per student. Again, we're at $12,907. Another indicator of financial health, then, is our bond rating, and we have maintained a Moody's AA1 bond rating, so that's a good indicator of the financial health. And this matters because it has helped us with interest rate advantages when we're issuing and refinancing debt, which ultimately keeps the costs of that capital as low as possible for all of you and all of us, district taxpayers. So our bond rating, which is, it's the second-highest bond rating possible, reflects our growing tax base, our adequate cash reserves, and our manageable debt levels. So all three of those are things that you should feel good about. Our board does have a policy of maintaining an unassigned general fund balance between 25% and 30% of our annual operating expenditures. You can see this on page nine. And this is important because we have been able to cash flow our operations. Some districts, which do not carry enough cash to cash-flow operations throughout the year, end up having to borrow money to cover expenses, and that ultimately costs all of you, all of us as taxpayers, money. So that's, that we're key staying in that 25% to 30% range for our unassigned general fund balance is a good fiscal practice. So that was a couple comments on financial health. So now, looking to our budget, just a couple of high-level things. Those of us who are homeowners know that one of the things that we do is we take care of our house with general maintenance so that we don't end up with huge unexpected expenses down the road. And that's something that we, as a district, also need to do, is take care of the facilities and the equipment that we own. So as a board, we have made a commitment to fund larger maintenance and improvement projects this year with an investment of about $780,000. And again, the thinking is this investment will decrease the amount of deferred maintenance on our schools, ensuring that our learning spaces are maintained adequately and in a fiscally sound manner. Another highlight, if you look at page nine, our budget does include investment dollars to continue our performance pay structures, and we believe these will be key to continuing to be able to attract and retain the incredible high-level talent that we have in this district. So salaries and benefits represent a 4% increase over the previous year's budget, and this is less than the percentage of the overall budget increase. But again, that's a reflection of our commitment to our staff and to making sure that we continue to attract and retain the highest-quality staff for our kiddos. If you look at page 11, you can see that we do expect that state aid is going to trend under the Consumer Price Index, the CPI, measure of inflation in future years. So again, when I started, I said our funding is a mix of local property tax and state aid. So as state aid decreases, increased pressure then is put on our local property tax. So on page 11, you see that total state aids just five years ago were $27,761,000, and we're now at $26,475,000. So just in the past five years, we've seen a decrease of 4.6% of state aid coming to our district. And as you can imagine, our district expenses have not decreased by 4, by 4.6%, so that's a scale that we look at trying to keep in balance. So this does mean that we have more reliance on the local levy to fund schools. Still, our proposed levy for this year is an under levy, and so that means, and you can see up here on this slide, the school funding equation, that the state actually dictates how much we, as a district, can levy, how much we can ask taxpayers to support our district. And we are $3.3 million below what that equation would say that we, as a taxing authority, could ask taxpayers to pay for our schools. So that's a good thing. That means that we, as a district, are being prudent with your dollars, and we're actually not asking you to put money into things that we don't think are needed for our kids' success. So our mil rate, if you look at page 15, you can see that our mil rate is estimated to decrease, that's a good thing, decrease, from $10.51 last year to $10.35 this year, so a 1.54% decrease. And this is before, and you will see this on your tax statement, before the school levy credit and the lottery credit are applied to your tax bill. So those are good things. So reflecting on the support of our superintendent and leading into the proposed budget from our school finance director, I believe that we can be very proud of how our investments in the Hudson School District are helping our kids and staff succeed, and the accomplishments that we're seeing, accomplishments just highlighted by Superintendent Olet. I'm excited about our future as a resident of this district, as a parent in this district, as a taxpayer in this district, and as a member of your Board of Education, and I'm proud that we are getting a high value for our tax dollars. So as Treasurer of the Board of Education, I support the 2019-2020 budget and levy. Thank you.
Next up, we have our Chief Financial and Operations Officer, Tim Erickson, to talk about that proposed 2019-2020 budget.
Well, thank you, and thanks for coming out tonight. I think that's a pretty tough act to follow with Dr. Olet and Treasurer Logland, but I'm here to try. I don't know if I'll make it, though, but I want to give a brief thank you to all the people who have a hand in this budget, which are many, many people. This budget process starts back in December and culminates with the board approving the budget in October. So it's a long process, it's an involved process, and we've got a lot of people involved that help us through this process, and I want to thank the board as well, as they sit through the many, many budget presentations that we do during the meetings. Also, I'll give a special thank you to Mark and Tammy in the back there for all the help that they provide in getting this information together. So with that, I'm just going to jump in, and we will have up here, this is just for you to follow along, because we've got, everybody's got a book, hopefully, and some of those numbers up there you won't be able to read because they'll be pretty small. But I just want to touch on page seven, Tim. One of our biggest challenges right now is addressing reduced state funding levels, and as Heather pointed out, we're actually experiencing, we really have fairly stable membership, fairly stable student numbers, but over the past five years, we've seen our, the overall trend for our state aid go down. So that is a challenge for us, because as the equation, it was up there notes, whatever we have with revenue limit, less the state aid that we receive, the balance is, would be levy. And there is a revenue limit, so you're limited as to how much you can levy as well. I'm going to move on to page eight and just cover that first bullet point there under the major assumptions. So when we look at our biggest piece, our two biggest pieces of funding from at the state level, state aid, we've actually gone down about, we've actually gone down about $836,000 in our equalization aid, and that's our biggest piece of aid. So that's down. The good news is we went up in per pupil categorical funding, which is a newer piece of the last few years that the state has added on. That actually went up 1.3, or actually went up 13.6%, but it's $496,000, so it's a much smaller number. The net effect is we decreased our aid with those numbers, went down $340,000. So when we add in inflation to that, and you take that 1.3% decrease in state aid, and then you add in inflation of 1.98%, add those two numbers together, you essentially lost 3.28% of your purchasing power for us to operate the district. So that is an issue that we need to keep an eye on. We need to be looking at planning and how we address those things as we go along in the future. I'm going to jump over to page nine, Tim. Property taxes, I'm just going to take that first line under revenues. Our property taxes do include about $780,000 for district-wide projects at our schools. This is to make sure that we maintain our roofs, maintain our heating plants. A lot of it is longer-term maintenance that we're doing with some additional, some facelifts in some of those areas, but that was a board-approved process that we went through, and that'll get us onto our, get us started on our long-term capital plan. As we go down, line 621, you can see that decrease in our equalization aid, so from $22.1 million down to $21.3 million, and increase in that per pupil aid from $3.6 to $4.1 million. As we move along, under expenditures, the three, line 300, which is other purchase services, the reason that's gone up by 13% is mainly due to that additional $780,000 that's been put in for those capital and deferred maintenance projects. So that's, gives us a good start across the district. And as we move down there, move down, we do have a balanced budget, so if you look under the general fund surplus or deficit, this budget is balanced for this year, so that's definitely good news. We've got some committed and unassigned fund balance summary down there where we have, we will wind up projecting, we'll wind up with about $1.5 million in our capital projects that's been committed by the board. Those are board committed. Our self-funded health insurance, this year, we're expecting that to drop by about $500,000. This is probably, was our, last year was our first year when we saw some larger claims on our self-funded health insurance for the past five, I believe, five years running. We were running at about a 2% inflation on that, so we were doing very well. Every once in a while, we do have some years under self-funding where we have, take a little bit bigger hit with some higher claims, so we do, we did plan for that, and that's why we've got a fund balance there. So the projected unassigned fund balance is at the $19.3 million and about 28% fund balance as a percentage of expenditures, so well within the board-approved policy. On pages 10 and 11, just drawing that relationship, if you look at our student counts, the number, their student populations, which is our aid membership, back in 1415, we were at 5,691 students. We've been fairly stable over that past five years, so going forward into 2019-2020 at 5,642. So that's been fairly stable. And the relationship, if you look at that chart that Heather was mentioning, where we see our state aid revenue for the past five years, six years, we're expecting that to be, again, it's 4.6% lower than it was back in 2014-2015. So it gets to be kind of exacerbated as we have inflation all the way along, but we're not, we're really not keeping up with inflation on a state aid revenue. So a couple of pieces to keep note on. The next several pages have information, pie charts, you can see how we spend, what percentage of our budget we spend on different things. And of course, we're in a service business. We take care of students, and thus, our biggest expenditures are staff, and that's no surprise. So that's our biggest expenditure, along with, if you look at purchase services, those are things where we may hire outside contractors to do different things for the district. I will skip over the next few pages and get over to page 16. I will skip over the next few pages and get over to page 16. I can go back, there you go. Okay, this one, yeah, actually, this one we don't have on that overhead, Tim, thanks. There's a lot of fine print here, but this is a lot of the same information that you see. It's just presented by a functional areas, and it presents all the different funds of the district, and it gives us different fund balances for those funds. So I won't get into that, I know we want to probably help make sure people don't fall asleep tonight, so. And our balance sheet on page 19, it's important to remember, we do keep fund balance on hand to cover our cash operating throughout the year. Our cash balances drop to very low points certain times of the year. So you can see, under our assets, we've got receivables of about $18 million. Those are tax receipts that we're waiting on from our taxing jurisdictions to remit those to the district for the previous year. So that's $18 million of cash that we don't have for the past operating year, and we have to wait into that next year to get it. So that's one of the reasons we keep that cash reserve, that's pretty important for us. Also, as Heather mentioned, keeps our bond rating high, it does impact our bond rating, provides us with a lot of flexibility when we hit tough spots, if we have our aid cut. Some years, we've had our aid cut by 10%. So it gives us that additional flexibility to react to those things, and maybe weather a storm for a year. Page 20 has our long-term debt. This is taxpayer-approved debt that was issued. Of course, the most recent one was for this building and for the middle school, for this room that you're sitting in tonight, and also for the stadium. So those are the biggest portions of our debt right now. Skip to page 24. Heather mentioned the under levy. That is direct property tax relief to property taxpayers in the district. So the under levy means that, if you looked at that chart previously, that equation that Heather had up on the screen, revenue limit, what it means is the district has not taxed to the extent that it could, that it would be allowable to by law. Many districts do that. Hudson hasn't for several years. And you can see in that chart going back to, actually, '02-'03, where the district had very, very small under levies, and those under levies grew over the years. And if you add up the cumulative amount of those under levies, that is taxed over the years of $122,760,000 that the district has not taxed our local residents over the past, from years '02-'03 to present. So that is a very, very rare thing for a school district to do that. In fact, if you look at page 25, we looked at the most recent data available, 2017-2018, districts that had a under levy of $250,000 or greater. And you can look at our under levy in 2017-18, Hudson was $7.6 million. And you can look at relative size, if you compare it to Madison Metropolitan, they're about four times larger, almost five times larger than we are, and their under levy is $2.2 million. And then the list goes down from there, and so it's pretty rare to see a district under levy by that amount. And then I'll go to page 26. And tonight, that first resolution is to set the tax levy, and so that's what we'd be asking for on the, that second resolution underneath there is covered under new business on the agenda. And that'll conclude my report.
Thank you, Tim. All right, now, this is the time of the meeting where we have proposed, the budget is proposed, and we have a hearing. Prior to calling for a motion to approve, anyone, any elector can come up and comment on the proposed budget. So I want to give folks an opportunity to come from out in the seats there, get to a microphone. Also, anyone here on the stage is also free and welcome to make a comment about the budget.
Mr. President?
Yes, Rob.
I just have to say, this is, I'm in the middle of my fourth year on our school board, and the investment that this board and our administration are making in our facilities is absolutely fantastic. And I want to thank everybody on this board and everybody that's participated to help us to get to this point. It's great progress.
Thank you for that comment. Any other comments, questions, concerns about the upcoming budget? I don't think the general public, you know, knows, obviously, a lot of the general public doesn't come to any meetings, but this budget is initially proposed by administration around February, March, and then it becomes discussed and modified throughout the year, and we're still not to the point where we have certainty, to the point where we set the levy, that's done by our late meeting in October. But at this point, we've got a good idea of where the revenues will come in from aid and so forth. So is there any other comments or questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve pursuant to the language in the resolution.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Do I move, or do I read the resolution? Okay. So, proposed resolution to set tax levy for 2019-2020. Be it resolved that a tax in the total amount of $48,185,416 per and $41,186,366 general fund, $6,999,050 debt service fund, and per and be and is hereby levied against the taxable property in the Hudson School District for school purposes.
Is there a second to the motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Opportunity for any further questions, comments? Hearing none. All those here at the annual meeting that are electors for the Hudson School District, if you are in favor of the motion as proposed to set the levy at the amount stated, please signify by saying aye. Aye. And those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Hearing none, the resolution is approved unanimously at the 2019 annual meeting. All right. Secondly, now we move on to new business, and we have a second resolution. And I think it's appropriate, since this is new business, we have to start by reading the resolution. Is there anyone who wishes to move or propose the resolution?
Mr. President?
Carrie.
Proposed resolution for transportation under Wisconsin statute 121.54, parent two, parent C. Be it resolved that in addition to the legal obligation to provide transportation to and from public school, for all pupils who reside in the Hudson School District, two miles or more from the nearest public school they are entitled to attend pursuant to Wisconsin statute 121.54, parent two, parent C, the Board of Education for the Hudson School District is hereby authorized to provide transportation to pupils enrolled in 4K through 8th grade in the district who live at least one mile from the school they are entitled to attend, and that such authorization shall be continuously in effect until revised or rescinded by the electors at an annual meeting or special meeting of the district.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second for a resolution under new business pertaining to transportation. And Superintendent Olet, do you want to give the reasoning behind this resolution?
Yes, the Wisconsin statute, the Wisconsin law says that students that live more than two miles from school, K-12, would qualify for transportation. Because we choose to set that bar actually a little bit lower at one mile for K through 8, you actually need permission from the electorate in order to do that. And so, we have not done that in the past, or we couldn't find on record where we've done that. It was probably done, it could have been done 20 years ago, but we can't seem to find it on record. So tonight, we're seeking permission from the electorate to do that. Otherwise, what happens is the school district would not be able to transport without payment for students less than two miles. So that's kind of the background behind that.
Very good.
Mr. President?
Yes, Carrie.
I apologize. Should that actually state enrolled in K through 8th grade? I think 4K might have different stipulations.
We wanted that 4K. The title on the resolution should have said 4K, but we've got it correct on the title of the resolution and the agenda, but it's correct on the resolution itself.
So it should be 4K?
Should be 4K, yes.
All right. But good question, Carrie, good question. So if there's any other comments or questions regarding this, it's one of those powers that's granted to the annual meeting, and, well, actually, in order for the school board to authorize this, they have to have the backing of powers from the electorate. So that's why this is here before us tonight. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution pertaining to transportation specifically for 4K through 8, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, the resolution passes. Next up, under new business, is to set the date for the 2020 annual meeting. There's a proposal, well, it's historically been the Monday after Labor Day. I guess legally, it can be any time in September, is that right?
Prior to the end of September.
Prior to the end of September, yep. So it could be in July, it could be in August. We tend to stick to September. It gives us the most current or most available data when setting our budget parameters.
And it happens to coincide with the action meeting in September. It could be also during our work session, but those work sessions sometimes fluctuate between the second, or the fourth or fifth Monday of the month. Guess we don't have five Mondays in September in 2020, so. But is there a motion for the date and time of the 2020 meeting?
Mr. President, I would move that we set the date for our 2020 annual meeting for Monday, September 14th, at 7:00 PM.
Second. There's been a motion and a second, and hopefully, the NFL cooperates and doesn't put either the Packers or the Vikings on that Monday night.
The Bears.
All right. Yeah. All those in favor of setting the date for September 14th, 2020, at 7:00 PM, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the motion passes. And now, we open it up to any other annual meeting powers, suggestions. I'll make three calls. This is the first. Now, a second call for any motions for other annual meeting powers. And a third call for other annual meeting powers. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the 2019 annual school district meeting for Hudson School District.
So moved.
It's been moved and second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, we are adjourned.